Is this thing on? So we are at five hundred ninety five tap areas out of I'm not sure how many I'm guessing a thousand ish we'll see. We got all the way up to the F train last night. So after F comes G looks like we've got a bunch of the G done already as it's runs along uh. Is this the D? Oh, we missed one right here. We should do that one real quick Neptune Ave. Okay, so F comes G. So guess we're at Fulton Street here. Yet another Fulton Street. I get super tired on Fridays. But streaming gives me a boost. I'm not gonna lie. But I am gonna crash pretty hard tomorrow. I'm playing Silk Song. I bought a Switch two to play Silk Song. That's probably what I'll be playing tomorrow. It's a difficult game as they say. But I'm having a lot of fun playing it just when I'm super tired. I have to be like I'm actually too tired to play this game right now. I'm trying to play with no spoilers, but there are so many spoilers online. I've only cheated once. I could not figure out one puzzle and the run back was just so long. So I did look up how to solve it and it said where the hidden wall is so. I I do feel bad about looking that one up. I couldn't figure it out. I was getting desperate and the run back was so long. So that's what I did. I don't think it's a spoiler. Uh, I'm right outside getting into the Citadel. The name of the boss is Last Judge. Um, but taking a break and exploring a different area instead. Broadway yeah another Broadway. Metropolitan Ave okay. And there we go. Putting the circles where they belong on the map. And then twenty first street. Six hundred and seven. Let's push that upstairs. And after G comes H. But I think we did that already. Yeah, the H is also the name of the um the Rockaway Park shuttle. Uh, you'll see that in the feed sometimes. H I J train comes next. Why does some of these have circles on them? So I calculated it. We were up to like a hundred and fifty stops an hour. Which is great because the first session I got like fifty stops in two hours. So picking up the pace. I feel like we might actually finish today. And there's an open mic I want to go to on Monday night. So that is added motivation to finish up today. And I'm definitely performing at an open mic on Sunday night up in Harlem. That hear me out open mic. I've got two originals prepared. I do want to practice them some more obviously to get them perfect perfect. Get that in the middle. And is that working? It is cool. Let's twist again. Twisting time is here. Round and round and up and down we go again. Cypress Hills. Crescent Street. No. No. Yeah. So there's also Norwood in the Bronx. Do you remember when? Cleveland Street. Cleveland. Think anyone pronounces it Cleveland? And Siclin. Alabama. So this has a line between the two. This one doesn't has a circle. I don't I don't know what they I don't know what they're trying to communicate here. Chauncey Street. And I'll see. I believe it's pronounced Kajushko. Thanks autocorrect. I did not mean to say kiosk. I meant to say Kajushko. I don't know what my streaming schedule will be going forward. Uh, coming back to it this week was so much fun. I feel like participating in social media only has upside if you're making something that you want people to know about and I do want people to know about how good my app is and how loved it is. However, it is a lot of energy and so if I stream after work I just need to I guess adjust my schedule to account for that. Because after I perform an open mic which is at night or after I stream which I guess I've been doing after work. I have such a huge rush that it's difficult to sleep. I get so happy. And because I get so happy it's like oh I want to stream every night. I'll perform every Monday at open mic and I'll stream all the other weeknights. I don't know if that's sustainable. Plus it made making a TikTok every day for the app like so much easier. I'm just like this is what I got done on stream today. And the posts I've been doing like decent. Like not hitting a thousand views or anything, but decent for the level of account that I am. So they're not performing worse performing just as good or slightly better than a typical post of mine. Got to feed the algorithm. Plus I guess it's fun like saying hey hey everybody I got some stuff done. Why is this J white? Does the key say why? Oh, here's the asterisk I was looking for. Skip stations peak direction express does not stop. Okay. Rush hours peak direction Z stops J does not stop. Okay. If only there was a rapper whose name was one nine we'd still have the nine train. But instead we still have the Z train because we have a rapper named Jay-Z. Chambers. And then Broad Street. Every day is a brand new day and that is a beautiful thing. Six hundred and fifty. So in half an hour we got another fifty stops. Approximately okay so after J K there's no K L. You got all the L's in Manhattan except for Union Squares. Which one's the zero? I should make these clickable huh? So that's the six. That's the zero. Zero, one, two, three, four, five, six. This is seven. Wait, but we have we have a seven. Where is it though? Well, let's let's push deceive it. And try to figure out this little puzzle. So that's seven. Zero. One. Two. Zero, one, two. Four. Five. Six. Where's the seven? Oh, it's all the way down here. Oh my goodness. That's a little bit of a mistake. Okay. So this is seven at Onion Square. And then oh I guess I canal still looks correct. Let's confirm. Okay, this one is not correct. Uh. Or do I just have an extra one there? I need to delete one of these. Oh, this is on Union Square again. Oh my goodness. So Union Square three is in the wrong spot. Okay. There we go. Canal. 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 And canal. Okay, that was a nice that was nice to sort that out. Let's push that up. that was nice to sort that out let's push that up so back to the L three Ave Bedford Lorimer Grayham Grand Montrose Morgan Yafferson Kalb Mertl Comanante no ai camino se hace el camino al andar traveler there is no path you make for yourself a path by walking if there was someone out there that got famous streaming their coding of a subway app and I wasn't giving my best shot at trying to be that person instead or being that person first I'd be pretty upset yeah I think I do wanna do this al andar se hace el camino y al volver la vista atrás se ve la senda que nunca se ha de volver a pensar traveler when you look back on the road you see the path that you will never step on again Comanante no ai camino sino estelas en el mar Comanante no ai camino sino estelas en el mar traveler there is no path only a ship's wake on the sea traveler there is no path only a ship's wake on the sea that poem has been such a help to me wait is East one oh fifth street a new stop is it on the old map oh it's E one oh five and autocorrect is handicapping me one oh five there it is stand still the trees ahead and the bushes beside you are not lost wherever you are is called here you must treat it like a powerful stranger must ask to know it and be known listen the forest breathes it answers I have made this place around you if you leave it you may come back again saying here no two trees are the same to Raven no two bushes the same to Ren if what a tree or a bush does is lost on you then you are surely lost stand still the forest knows where you are you must let it find you hi look we're at Forest Ave that is had been another very helpful poem that's lost by David Waggoner I think they got Elmo to say Knickerbocker Avenue I don't know if it was a skit or A I or what but that's a big word for Elmo how do I feel about those poems I feel comforted I guess like the next step to take isn't always clear what is going on with this map oh that's the M R but what did it used to be I guess it's not the other one it's not the one to Astoria that'd be the N W okay so it's this one I still need to swap uh this stuff in the map forty six like what's gonna happen with this app there's some pretty big people that love it but this app is still not yet sustaining me uh financially I would really like that and I believe it can kind of a mix of subscriptions in the app subscriptions on Twitch I don't know sell merch or something guess what's nice about the underway logo is that it's public domain actually I don't have to pay any royalties for that I have to pay royalties for a bunch of other stuff which is already an achievement Grand Ave Newtown this playlist is all over the place I used to have a radio show back in university and I would do all over the place stuff just like this Woodhaven Boulevard I guess some people try really hard to do the thing that makes the most sense and other people try really hard to do the thing that makes the least sense I guess it's like Enzo circles in a way huh either really trying to draw the perfect circle or really trying not to I am trying to make the perfect subway app for New York City and enough big people love it that I would say that is successful M comes N drink some water what is grief some people say grief is love with nowhere to go that one doesn't really resonate with me but I also kinda get it oh I love this song how do I add it to a playlist I don't know activity there's no activity music oh here we go now I can add to a playlist okay Astoria Boulevard don't you run out of things to say doesn't hasn't happened yet yet another Broadway Shiloh in the city made a video about the names of the streets in Queens today I guess because Queens was a bunch of towns I guess everything was a bunch of towns before it was a big city which I guess makes sense when you hear it but that's definitely wasn't top of mind it's like oh Flushing used to be its own town I mean I haven't looked this up just from what she's saying like oh that that makes sense so I guess there's all these um all these main streets and stuff and then a guy named And then a guy named Charles Powell, I think. He came up with a system that we have today and like the worst rhyme as a mnemonic device to remember. Um, it was pretty bad. The rhyme. And I guess a lot of people complained about the system in Queens and I guess they complained back in the day too that they didn't like it. But it was the gas, electric and post office all threatened to stop service until the grid was accepted. Like was there just really no other good ideas? So that's the N. Oh, there's these stops here. Kinda sounds like Jane Fonda. Someone who follows me on TikTok just became an MTA conductor. Which is cool. He made a post about it. Congrats to him. This is forty ninth street. I'm planning to have beef for dinner. I haven't had beef in a while. Maybe I won't. Maybe I just wanna go straight home after streaming. There's always someone jealous of what you have. What would it be like to be John Lennon for a day and have access to a studio? And producers and music isn't that crazy yet, like simple stuff still works. I feel very lucky. Um, where's the N? Oh, there it is. So many subway stops. Seven hundred twenty five circles already set. Yeah, so we did about one fifty in an hour again. This is a nice song. I guess like everywhere in the world has like practiced something a lot and perfected it. Guess what we talk about like traditional cuisines or like traditional music uh styles? And you get to like TikTok and Instagrams and there's people that have spent a lot of time perfecting. Um, I don't know if the weirdest or most obscure activities is the right way to say it. It's like there's a guy that does the dances in the mirror. Uh, all from the same angle and he's like opening and closing the mirrors in his bathroom. And calls it Bathroom Broadway. He's been doing that for a long time, like and he is really good at it. How did he uh how did he decide that that was his thing A and B? How did he decide that like this is gonna take me places? And then I guess there's another guy who like I guess I saw a reaction video to him where the reactor called him a professional Tumblr. Uh, ref- oh, no, professional stumbler. I guess I'm perfecting making a subway app. And I see it as an art project. I guess it's more utilitarian than perhaps a strict strictly artistic project. But I feel like it encapsulates my point of view in the way that a piece of art does. Like this is what a good subway app uh looks like. This is what a good subway app acts like. And you should partner with me. You should you should pay me currency so that this can keep happening. Um, that's the N and Q. I did not drink enough water today. That is a surprising thing is that when I'm tired, it means I didn't drink enough water. Okay, so we did all those. Q, Q, Q goes this way. We did those. Here we go. Let's shove this upstairs first. How do you become a good streamer? Some people say pretend that God is watching you and then speak from there. Some people say pretend that you're watching yourself and say what you would wanna hear. Some people say pick an audience member and speak directly to them. I guess that goes back to the poems I was reciting earlier from memory that there there is no path. There's just a ship's wake on the sea. There's just there's these things that worked out for other people. That doesn't mean they're gonna work out for you. That doesn't mean that they're not even like a full path. It's just a ship's wake on the sea. The sketch of an idea of where something successful happened. Some people say I like to encourage other people's creativity. And I guess that's cute. I definitely do not wanna discourage anyone else's creativity, but I am personally busy encouraging my own right now. Oh, this one should be the zero. Let's see. Okay, cool. Avenue U. On the Q. Neck Road and then Ocean Parkway. Oh, I remember this song. So Q, effort, Q comes R. Oh, here's R right here. Let's push upstairs. So many eighty six streets. Bay Ridge. You're a rich girl and you're going too far 'cause you know it don't matter anyway. You can rely on your old bay money. You can rely on your old bay money. It's a rich girl. A ridge ridge girl. Twenty five street. Here we go. I'm so grateful that I made this editor for myself. This took forever though. People were asking where is this map for a long time. I was also waiting for the MTA to give me permission to use the new map, which they finally did. R, 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 R. Looking for the R train. I found the W that's missing. Wait, where was it? Yeah, Broadway, okay. And this one is the zero. Okay, so we need a one on the W Broadway. Okay, so that's the R. After R comes S. I guess that's the shuttles. Those shuttles are done. Uh, this shuttle needs park place. And this S we got done already when we did the A. I guess also under S is the Staten Island Railway. It's a Long Island Railroad. Two Rs, but it's railway and they didn't say RW. Hi, hi, John two point O. How was your day? I get super tired on Fridays, but streaming gives me like a boost. And then I can't fall asleep. Like I stayed awake till I wanna say one AM last night. And I got off the stream at seven, so I'll get guess it really sticks with me. If I'm gonna keep up with streaming, I need to fix maybe fix isn't the wrong word, understand how to Understand how to navigate the high I get. I mean, it is such a nice high, I would like to, I think I'm gonna keep doing this in some capacity. Um, I just don't know how often. Um, 'cause I do wanna save nights for open mic, I do wanna save nights for other kind of chores and stuff. But I don't know, I guess maybe this try again at streaming. Like, hey, I live in New York and I make a subway app that New Yorkers love. Maybe you wanna watch sometimes. I think it's also like not just the actual viewers you get from streaming, but the practice talking and like having having it there is like a resume, is like here's all these videos of me working on my app, like see, I do work on my app. Um, some people are accused of paying people to play their characters for them when a new game comes out. And if that person had video evidence of him playing, uh, well, it'd be a different story. No one's accusing me of it, but I just, I feel like like when you go to a company website, you don't actually read their blog posts, I don't know, maybe you read a blog post or two. Um, be like, you see that they have a blog. Or can you go see, find a new brand of shoes on Instagram? You don't look at every single Instagram post they've ever made. Maybe you do, but you just, you just look at a few and they're like, okay, there's a lot here. They've been, they've been around. They probably won't fall off the earth tomorrow. Maybe they will. Anything could happen. But it shows, I guess it shows that I'm I'm here, I'm queer, I'm working on this. Not bad, says John John, playing some no man's and clean some stalls. Hell yeah, hell yeah for clean stalls. Oh, I have the camera set up. The laptop camera, uh, any, any feedback on that? Haven't had that on in forever. Earlier I was musing about these different creators on Instagram who find something and they put their whole heart into it and they're like, they've created an art form out of the weirdest is maybe not the right word. Unexpected. Commonplace. Things, I mean, that's how like tap dancing started, right? Well, I guess there's a bit of a longer story there, maybe that's not the best comparison. Careful what you say online, people take stuff out of context all the time. I guess so, but you also gotta just live your life, man. If I live in fear of being taken out of context, I'm never gonna say anything. And sometimes you gotta say something to practice saying things. Oh, I should probably turn off the pre-roll if that's still on, the pre-roll ads. I feel like that's not a good thing to have. I wonder what the least amount of ads possible that Twitch lets you have. Stapleton, that's in the Wu-Tang documentary. Or reenactment or artistic retelling. Street George. Okay, so it's S T U V W. So the W train we do. W W W W W W W, oh, it ends there. W X Y Z, we did the Z. Are we done? We're done a whole half hour early? Because we could double check everything, start with A. A for abominable snowman. A is looking good, A is looking good. A is looking good. Uh, oh, here's one, haha, and it's a one train. Eighteenth Street. I thought I did the one. Well, I guess this is why we are double checking. And then I guess we could do the path trains. Just kinda scanning if there's anything that doesn't have a red circle on it. We are very far away from one thousand, we're much further from one thousand than I expected. Cause four hundred seventy-two times two is like nine hundred. I guess there's so many single dot stops that it's not, it's not double. There's only a few, uh, multi-dot stops in comparison to how many single stop dot, single dot stops there are. Wait, what just happened to, uh, Tompkinsville? And Saint George. Ooh, Carole Street is missing. G. Oh, look at that, I guess I got these mixed up. Okay. Carole Street. This must be the zero. Carole Street one. And then Smith Ninth. Zero. Cool, so if we tap here, that's correct. If we tap here, that's correct, great. Okay, let's do the path stops. Okay. Can't believe we're done early, I'm so happy. Like I thought this was gonna be a stretch, but we're done a whole half hour early. Incredible, how are we gonna celebrate? With a yippee, haha, yeah! Christopher Street Path. And then is that a mustache on a trophy? That's hilarious. WTC. No. World Trade Center, there we go. Hell yeah! Wow. Four nights. Two hour stretches each. Except for the last one was an hour and a half. So that's seven and a half hours. It took seven and a half hours to touch all the stops. Seven hundred eighty-six stops. That's uh, seven, seven point, seven point five times sixty, it's four hundred fifty minutes. So that's definitely faster than well less than a minute per two stops. Oh my goodness, wowee zowee. Oh my god. I frickin' did it. Um, so let's publish for iOS. Okay, great. And then let's go to the iOS app. Touch the touch ID. Oh, I don't have it in the app yet, guess I need to add it. Uh huh huh huh. Oh my god. Oh da da da, we did something. We have accomplished. Oh, I have it on a branch. Guess it's time to merge the branch? No, it's time to switch to the branch and then update the branch with trunk. Where is it? These two can I delete? Did I not push the branch? Oh, here it is. Jason Airline Flyer, it took me most of the week, but I finally made it to your stream. Hey, how's it going dude? Uh, literally just finished, uh, one minute ago. Putting every single tap area on the subway diagram. This is the, uh, the map editor that I made for myself to make that job a heck of a lot easier. Doing it only in code, uh, took a lot of reloading the app. Um, but here I can tap on a stop and I can move the point around by dragging and say which subway transit system it is, path or subway for now. Um, yeah, I was just doing some simple math on how long it took, cause I did it four nights this week. Uh, so that's, it's like four hundred fifty minutes is in seven and a half hours. And there was seven hundred eighty-six total tap areas. Uh, there's five hundred locations on the classic map, but with the doubling up, I thought we'd be closer to one thousand. But I guess it turns out there's enough like single dot stops that were way less than double. Uh, even when I add in the path stops. I, uh, I did look up your podcast, uh, and I guess it's mostly about airline stuff, which makes sense given what you're famous for. And I confess, I'm not as interested in, in air travel at the moment. Uh, I guess the most recent episode was about a couple crashes and, uh, yeah, I, I confess, I did not, I didn't give it a listen. So I was in the middle of swapping to the iOS app and seeing how we're doing. Get that thing loaded up into the, um, iPhone app, make sure everything works fully. Ah, I see, Xcode has, needs to be forced quitted. Ah I see Xcode has needs to be force quitted. Give the resolver a second and. Let's see what we got. Command R to run the app. Build failed that's good. It's open in another workspace ah okay so they still haven't fixed that. Figures Jason says I get here and you're in your last station in Staten Island. I guess to be fair the last station was the PATH World Trade Center but yeah. After S comes. T U V I guess there's a few W stops I had missed. And there's actually two one stops I had missed. I missed Eighteenth Street somehow. And Christopher Street but put those in. How is uh how is your podcast recording? Was that Wednesday? You record uh every week or so? Build succeeded. There it is. Hmm. Felt like it needs to like be further down. But I think that's decent enough to launch with and then tweak things from there. The new map is like so is that like literally white? Uh that's not the right app. Color meter. Yeah it's just straight up white. Maybe my window has to be a little bit more contrasty. Jason says yeah we do that on Wednesdays still a week which was nice nothing terrible happened today I was off did the tour of Coney Island yard yesterday. Oh sweet. I would love to do that at some point. Yeah this white on white is not very um. We'll figure it out. I think this is good enough for a launch. And then we can tweak from there. I can imagine just doing something completely different for. The popover for the diagram. They're actually using white. Well it's also my first time kinda seeing this and will have to sink into my brain a little bit too. Agree that white on white is not great. Hey John two dot O redeeming chill vibes thank you so much dude. I guess it's I guess I guess I can uh I can take colors from here I can use. Cream and light blue in my popover. Something like a minute forty? Let's see so if I tap on the queue here. Yeah I I think at any at any rate the arrow needs to be a little bit more slender. Which is how I had it in the very early builds. Uh back in Android one point O. And we can do like a cream background or something. Yeah this is just a little too claustrophobic. But it's here. See if we can zoom all the way out. Then if we tap on nice. And zoom all the way in. Jason says sorry if you are saying anything I can't hear it. You're only getting served my sixth ad oh. Yeah I'm not sure what to do about the ads. Uh he already subscribes to the app. That'd be cool to like have the the app subscription and the Twitch subscription be like synced or something. Let's see what can I do about the ads? I guess the minimum is thirty second ads and pre-roll is partially disabled. Actually never used Twitch before now I had to create an account. You can't watch um oh I guess to chat you need to make an account that makes sense. Yeah I have the ads on the minimum. They were like here or so. And pull them down to the as low as they can go. And pre-roll ads are partially disabled whatever that means. Run three minutes of mid-roll ads per hour. Oh so if I move this up to three minutes they are fully disabled? Yeah thanks so much for stopping by dude hope you have a great weekend um. Yeah I'm not sure what I said that you missed but I guess you have to run now either way so. Uh yeah I guess we was talking about the white on white not looking so great and. How the pointer I think needs to be a little bit more slender it's a little um seems a little claustrophobic in some of the stations. Especially when zoomed in all the way. Just like really up in there. Take care dude. That was awesome. I can't believe you stopped by. Uh yeah so it's working in the app. I think it's good enough to launch with we can do some of the tweaks. Another time. Um. Yeah I guess I'll just merge that into main. So we can push this. Ah just merge it in. Merge it into trunk. Can I squash merge? Oh whatever. Delete branch. Wow. Um I guess I should um yap to TikTok about all that. Uh where's the simulator? Uh finished the new subway diagram ten minutes early than what I was expecting to. Uh streamed four nights this week two hours each night. And got it done in seven and a half hours. You can see it here. That it's uh it's working and the old map is still here too. So I'm not sure exactly when I'm gonna push this to the App Store. Um but it's basically ready to go. Um there are a few things I don't like like the white on white um. I think in the future I wanna make some changes to the uh. To the popover or something um. Just make this a little bit more aesthetic uh. We'll see. Oh and we got the uh. Staten Island Railway. Do we have PATH? We've got the PATH still here. What about PATH at like twenty third street? Yep that is there also. Cool. Oh and uh Airline Flyer stopped by the stream so that was cool too. Have a good weekend. Yeah I'm gonna head out too. Thanks for stopping by John.